October 10th, 16M. I know we may have some visitors tonight from Edgewood. I think Victoria Clark has contacted Councilman Hart about wanting to talk about some odor issues with our maintenance and repairs on our sewer plant. So Victoria, I'll go ahead and recognize it. Let me just say one thing as a point holder. Typically, the way these things kind of work is that we depend on the size of the issue. We like to normally go through a committee process because at regular council meetings, sometimes the person who can address the issue is not always here. So like if this was a recreation issue, this came to our attention yesterday. We already had the agenda made and all that stuff. So typically, you had a recreation issue or a trash issue, we wouldn't have anybody here. So we like to always have the right person here to address it because most of us are not, in some cases, an engineer or a carpenter or whatever. We knew that Jessica was going to be here, not told Jessica to address it. She's probably the one who's going to handle most of the discussions. So Victoria, if you'd like to address that.
Hi, everyone. I'm Victoria Clark. I live in Edgewood, have lived there a little over two years. And thankfully, we have a lot of people here from Edgewood subdivision wanting to bring up the terrible, terrible smell that we feel like it just keeps getting worse. I know that you guys are in the process of cleaning out the lagoon, and we understand that there's a, you know, a process to that. There's also space constraints that you guys are working with as well. And if I'm correct, I think it's going to be a one- or two-year process. But we're just really trying, we're really struggling here in the neighborhood with the terrible smell that keeps on getting worse. We can't, it's getting to a point where you just can't go outside, can't open up your windows because that sewage smell comes in, particularly in cold days. This morning was, of course, one of them. So wanted to address it and see is there anything else that can be done because it's just a really, really big nuisance for us and really needed some support and trying to figure out a compromise or something that maybe possibly we could do to speed up the timing on this.
No, I appreciate that, and I take that very seriously. You know, those complaints, those kind of noxious odors are something that we don't want to have to experience and don't want to have them drawn out. Some of this is, we do have, we did implement some measures to try to combat this smell. We've started treating the lagoon that's being dredged from that. Part of the problem we get these odors is that when we do the dredging process, we're no longer able to add air. So with that lack of air in that big surface area of a lagoon, that creates those odors that we normally don't have because it's now going a little salty here, but it's going from an aerobic condition to an anaerobic, and that creates these odors. So I'm struggling in order to be able to make sure I keep a water cap over that sludge in order to help keep those smells down and making sure that the dredging company can still actually access the sludge and keep production moving. You know, these lagoons unfortunately have not been cleaned out very frequently over the last 40 to 50 years. And we've gotten to the point with the growth of our community that we've had to buckle down and really tackle it because it has accumulated. And we tackled it about a year ago, and we got as much as we could out until I felt like the neighbors were like, this is all we can handle, we've got to stop. So we got about 70% through with that lagoon. And with the maintenance of our expansion coming on, I've got to prepare and get more out before I take the plant offline so that we can make sure we don't have wastewater that is, that we can continue to treat and not discharge and constraints. I'm trying to balance that. But we are, we have started adding a chemical, like a peroxide, to chemically add oxygen back into the water. We've got some deodorizers and fans that we've added on one end of the lagoon to try to blow. It smells like dryer sheets. And I've already spoken with the chief operator today to try to, he's gotten in contact with our vendor, to get additional deodorizing fans all around the lagoon. And the dilemma is it's so tight, is if I put them, I got to get power to it and making sure that we can still get many for the truck. So I'm really stuck between literally a hill and a hard place with just access and keeping that access going. So I drove around all over town this afternoon and went all the way around the plant. I went all the way through every street in Edgewood. I went down Barton Road. I went down every valley I could think of, you know, and kept my windows down all day. And in the daytime, when it's warm, it's not bad. Like I didn't smell any real smells in Edgewood, even down on Creekwood Drive, down in that valley where it's normally going to be low. The dense air when the night's cool holds whatever smells coming up and pulls it back down. So I'm kind of battling, I'm fighting that cool, dense air in the evenings that are keeping it in the mornings. And then by lunchtime, it seems to be getting better. But I know that doesn't help you guys in the evenings when you come home from work. So I'm looking at other alternatives, but I also want to make sure whatever I continue to try works and it doesn't cost, none of these measures are inexpensive. So I want to make sure I'm not just spraying for bees in the air and it doesn't really do any good. So we're trying to tackle this a little bit more so than we have in the past. But again, some of these cool nights have not been favorable. It doesn't seem to be enough. So we're going to try to increase those efforts and see if I can see, if we see any improvement. And then if it doesn't help, you know, we're going to have to go back to point B. But I almost have a loss of what else to do to make sure we can continue to handle the waste stream, do the necessary maintenance, and still make it bearable for everybody during this time.
What kind of timeline are you working with? Is the one to two year, is that correct?
That's for the overall construction when the plant is going to be expanding. But we're just, we're dredging lagoon one in the back. At this point, I'm working on timelines because the project's currently out for bid for the overall, the big project. And once I know more how long I have to work on the lagoon, I feel like November, I'm going to move to the second lagoon. So we're going to be moved, and I have to get it completely empty and drained because it's going under complete renovation to meet some new permitting requirements that we have and adding new treatment technologies. So I'm thinking we will be finished with all dredging and all sludge removal, hopefully by January the first. But yeah, we're not going to be doing sludge removal for two years. No. We're going to be able, in fact, we're not even emptying lagoon one. We're going to keep that water level there. And as soon as we're moving to the next one to get that emptied for the contractor to be able to start their work, we'll have air, more water back in there, air back on. I just, I wish I could do air and dredge, and that's what's got me in a pickle.
What's the reason for not being able to do that?
The feasibility, how that actually, the mechanics of how that works. Because the air raiders have to be anchored with cables on the banks to keep them stationary. And when it's spinning and creating air in the water, it's stirring up the sludge that you're trying to settle out and dredge. And then that takes separate cables to run an underwater dredge going in the opposite direction. So you hit your cables, you can't keep. Yeah. It's just a feasibility of how that equipment works. So yeah.
After this project is complete, will we still have this odor in Edgewood? We've lived there 46 years, and there's always been an odor in Edgewood at certain times of the year.
Yes, there will always be some odor at certain times of the year as long as there's a wastewater sewer plant at the bottom hill. I don't think there's ever a way to not have odors at certain times of the year with just that dense air, just the nature of wastewater treatment at times. Again, the better the plant's running, generally you don't notice those odors as much, again, other than just certain times. So I don't want to give a false sense of hope that they will never, you know, poo will never smell. But again, we work really hard to try to keep treatment and minimize those things.
Don't we have another treatment plant downstream from there on the Hightower property?
Yes, there's a second plant that we also treat wastewater as well.
What'll be done with that?
We're treating wastewater there.
Anything down there? Can you progress it? Do anything different to get some of that smell down there or something?
They have smell down there too.
That's a little bit less of population.
And that, we've done the same types of maintenance down there. But again, to your point, it's more rural in nature, and we don't get those complaints because there's just no one nearby. But we still have to do the maintenance and treat. It's just the location of where town and your urban areas are that need the wastewater to be treated, so.
John, we need both of those plants with capacity. One doesn't, one can't handle the capacity and.
I've lived down in Edgewood since 1963, so.
I was going to say.
So you can't tell me anything I don't know. I grew up down there since 1963, so duh. I mean, I know it's there and everything, so.
That's what happens, John. You know, they built that plant there probably eight years ago. That was a rural farm area of the community, and the community has grown to it.
Well, only mom did property.
That plant, the plant was, is there. The city grew up around it, Edgewood, Sixth Street, Fourth Street, and some of those areas, so it's.
Used to blade on Heaven Hill too.
Well, we played on Barton, Heaven Hill, wherever, but. Well, they sometimes call us problems.
We take our time.
They're not completely innocent on that discussion. Sometimes their discharges create problems, but.
Well, I'm pretty much knowledgeable about all of this, so.
You know, when it's really, really hot, we get that too. We get that odor when we're in the heat, in the hot weather.
You just call it cat, new sewer plant, you know, that's been there. You know, it's kind of one of our main workforces for providing that service. So if we don't do this, you know, intention, I think you all would understand that we would rather everything run smooth without having it, which cat, emptying the grounds in a vacuum where there's just no odor created, that's just part of it. But Jessica is, we were already well aware of this situation. We did, going in every time we had to drain the lagoon, we were just going to have this situation. As she explained, we're trying to use some more new deodorizer, trying to chemicals to help mitigate some of the smell, but.
And sometimes if the wind, the weather pattern shifts, and it starts blowing in different directions, and I'm like, oh, man, it's, it's kind of a catch 22. So I do understand, and anytime I drive through town, I mean, I live in town, I work at City Hall, run into ballgames all over town, and I'm very sensitive and I'm aware and I'm constantly trying to find ways to make it better. And I'm on our contractors, you know, can we increase production? You know, can we do this quicker? And unfortunately, we are just, I've got a nine-foot road with a semi-trailer, with the drip, with the press, and the physicality of balancing that. I'm hoping with the expansion, we are making some things a little wider and making this process simpler so that I can add a larger press and have a higher productivity rate and making that a little bit easier. But it's still, it takes time. And the more the community grows, the more sludge we accumulate, it's just the nature of it. I'm blessed that we don't have to deal with sludge daily like some communities, so that part is a blessing. But it is, I know it's an obnoxious nuisance when we have to do it. So again, we've, I've got some other measures. I'm hoping that they are more effective. And again, we're going to continue to work on it to see if I can make it better, just.
Well, I would hope that you all would continue to do that and be willing to take a look at, I don't care what the cost is, because you are affecting our daily lives by this smell. And it's not just a bad smell every once in a while. I mean, you can't sit outside, you can't even go into your house and get away from the smell. It comes to your house. Kids don't go outside and play. You know, it's horrible. I mean, it's absolutely horrible. And property values have got to be hurt by this. Who the hell would want to move to Edgewood with that smell that's constantly there? Can't get away from it. And I know during the day, it kind of dissipates and it's better, but you know, that's great during the day, but we're all at work and at school. And you know, when you can't even come home to your home and sit out on the deck or even sit inside the house without smelling it, it's no way that we should have to live or anyone should have to live, you know? And I get your restraints, but I hope that you are willing to take a look at these other measures and really look at them and really be willing to put some other efforts into getting this cleaned up at a quicker rate and getting the smell dissipated because it's terrible. I mean, it makes you sick. It makes you physically sick. Well.
We have to do the maintenance, otherwise we'd be shutting it down and having to ask everybody to go back on cements.
That might not be a bad idea.
Do that, you know, so.
Is the facility, does it not big enough to handle all the waste? Or, I mean, is that, is that part of the issue? Is it just need, we've got too many residents attached to it? What's?
Sewer plants require periodic maintenance. If they're not worthy, which city you're in or.
Well, I understand that.
They have to drain the lagoon and we have to.
Okay. So it's something you'd have to do just every, every year or a couple of years in a while?
Yeah, it's so often. And prior to, I guess, 2019, there had been a very long period of time where only very minimal sludge had been removed. And just as the rapid growth of the community and most of all of the growth, especially with our industry, has started coming in that area, it's created also with increased permit requirements. It's requiring additional treatment measures that are causing sludge to accumulate at a faster rate. So that's also causing it worsening that. And when our plant comes online, the division of water is adding additional permit requirements for us to meet even more stringent phosphorus limits to the stream, and that's going to acquire even more rapid. When you treat for phosphorus, it creates more solids because you have to add an alum product that settles that out and binds that phosphorus into that material. So that's going to, I feel like unfortunately, it's a double-edged sword. The cleaner we make the discharge, the more it's acquiring, it accumulates this sludge product that then we have to find a way to manage and remove. I wish there was an easier way to do it. And again, we'll, we're looking, I'm hoping that can find something that works better, you know, while we're doing this. And technology has gotten some better. I think 10 years ago, the method was it was literally, they would suck it out and then shoot the water up into the air and it would spray. And they talk about, whoo, there was, I'm like, there's got to be a better way. And you know, there is a way. It's more expensive, but we're trying to not take the cheapest way, but the most efficient and manageable way. Again, there's, I wish I had a way to make it not smell, period, but.
Well, thank you for your time. Thank you for hopefully coming to resolution soon and getting, hopefully it'll get better for everyone, so thank you. And thank you, Betty, for all your help and just kind of being our voice.
Are you still having an issue with having a home to take the sludge? Because it seems like in 2019, the landfill wasn't accepting it anymore, so you're having to take that out of the community? Is that still an issue?
No. So that is one positive, that we have been able to get permitting through the waste management branch with, in the Kentucky Division. And we have permitted farms that we can do a beneficial reuse and land application of bio solids. So we are stockpiled on a farm, and those will get land applied and used as natural fertilizers and kind of beef up that soil basin. You know, it's a win-win for the farmer. They don't have to pay for fertilizer. So we do have that addressed so that we're able to keep the trucks moving. We're not having to wait for one truck a day and have to stop. So that part's definitely gotten better for now, so.
We thank you all for coming to let us hear all this situation. It's not something we want to wear, but we're trying to do our best and dedicate it with whatever resources we have available to us. We can't relocate it, you know, it's just, that's not feasible, but we're doing our best we can. Thank you all.
Thank you.
You're welcome to say, or if you.
No, we're good.
Thank you all for waiting.
Thank you.
Thank you all.
Thank you.
Good seeing you all. Good seeing you all. Take care of yourself, everybody. Okay, we'll move on. We have a proclamation that they've determined that month of October will be manufacturing month here in Kentucky or in the United States. And so we've got a proclamation in recognition of that. So I'd like to ask our city attorney to read it, and I'll make some comments after that.
Thank you. Whereas manufacturing is a dynamic and robust industry crucial to the health and strength of Kentucky's economy. And whereas manufacturers factor in the success of several key industries in the Commonwealth, including automotive and EV, aerospace, healthcare, metals, distribution and logistics, food and beverage, and numerous others. And whereas manufacturing represents approximately 12.5% of Kentucky's workforce and the industry contributes $46 billion annually to the state's domestic product. And whereas in 2022, manufacturing was responsible for $8.3 billion in new investments in more than 8,900 full-time jobs for Kentuckians. And whereas in 2023, 54 manufacturing-related projects have been announced to date, contributing to nearly $2.5 billion in new investments and nearly 4,000 full-time jobs. And whereas manufacturing month is a time to celebrate and thank the 250,000 Kentuckians at the over 3,000 manufacturing companies around the Commonwealth. Now therefore, IJ Richard Heaton, Mayor of the City of Barstown, who hereby proclaims October 2023 to be manufacturing month in Barstown, Kentucky.
All right, thank you, honey. Just to harder recite the most Kentucky numbers, but I just thought you all might be interested in knowing what manufacturing means right here in Barstown. I think to apply some of the numbers, a little bit interesting. Just industry type of jobs, 78% of all our employment in industries like come from traditional manufacturing, like automotive, packaging, distillery. Very small numbers come from wood production, machine shop, logistics, food and beverage, et cetera. But you always hear bourbon, 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 bourbon. There's 1,600 jobs here in Barstown, primarily Barstown, automotive manufacturing. 1,300 jobs is distillery. And almost 1200 jobs are packaging. You know, packaging, you've got companies like Fuji Seal, Takigawa, Polyair, people like that. Orbis, I think, is kind of a packaging company. So you know, you always hear about the distilleries, but automotive is still the largest employer we have, so it's, I think, certainly manufacturing should be recognized here in Barstown because it is, you know, between those three, you've got about 3,200 jobs right there in traditional manufacturing right here in Barstown. So well, not all of Barstown because you've got some, two distilleries outside the city limits, and some of that, but it's big business, so that's why we decided to make that proclamation. So I don't think we need to take any action, so we'll move on from there. All right. Next, we have a memorandum of agreement. We've talked about, we received a land and water conservation grant of $150,000 for our mayor's park. That came through the Department of Local Government, but it's federally funded money. So when you have these federally funded monies, you better have a memorandum of agreement. So we've got to, I'll let Jessica maybe speak a little bit too, we need to read all of it, but we need authorization for her being signed off on the agreement form.
Yes, this is just, this is the land and water conservation grant that was applied for back a couple of years ago, or maybe about a year, year and a half ago now, for the mayor's park. And we had gotten word that we were sitting at that $150,000 grant, and we had to go through an approval process. And we just got word that it had gone through all of the channels with the part of interior.
And also, Nashville Parks have assigned a lot of.
Yes, so some bigger brother organizations had to put their blessing on it, and we were able to get that blessing and this contract sent last week, so, which is great timing since we have the project out to bid tomorrow, so for the mayor's park. So great timing.
So if I could, anybody having questions of Jessica about the memorandum of agreement? We have to do this anytime we get federal funding, we have this on water projects, sewer projects, that kind of stuff.
This is like a standard memorandum of agreement. And I'd like to make a motion to authorize the mayor to decide on behalf of the city to receive these documents.
I mean, a motion, I can check this for me to execute the memorandum of agreement that's required for the grant process. Is there a second?
Second, Mayor.
Second, I can, Councilman Williams, is there any other discussion? Okay, I'll look in favor, so you have to say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? I think motion's carried. Now unlike some sewer projects, they require a sign to be erected. In this instance, going in a park, they want a sign to be erected, recognizing this. Now, when they gave us two or three million dollars a few years ago to put a sewer line in, they didn't require a sign out there in a woodland area to bring that sewer line in, but I read that in the mail, so I didn't need.
Some have, we have had some for other sewer projects, but not that particular one.
All right, so, okay, we'll move on then. We have minutes from our September 26 meeting, and we also had the minutes, we had to have a special call meeting on the 28th. If there's no corrections or additions, we can approve then by unanimous consent. And then under ordinances, we have a first reading on ordinance B 2023-17, Classification and Compensation Plan. If I could, I'd like to get a council member to introduce it, then I'll, then we can address the summary as well as the reason, Robert. Majoral exchanges to our classification compensation plan.
Mayor, I'd be happy to introduce ordinance B 2023-17, Classification and Compensation Plan, and ask our city attorney to please read the summary.
Thank you. Summary of ordinance B 2023-17, Classification and Compensation Plan. An ordinance amending and adopting as amended an ordinance creating the classification and compensation plan. The City Council of the City of Barstown, Kentucky, is hereby ordained in amendments we made to Chapter 35 Employment Policies, the Classification Plan and Compensation Plan of the City of Barstown's Municipal Code of Ordinances by amending the title, pay grade, and number of authorized positions as follows. Number of, in the administration department, number of positions, strike one, add the number two for the title maintenance worker, which is grade four. And in the cable net department, there'll be one position, strike the title chief information officer, the title broadband engineer, grade 14. Strike entirely one position, network engineer, grade 10. Add the title, one position, sorry, add the position of one network administrator, which is grade nine, and add the one position with the title of broadband network administrator, which is a grade seven position. This ordinance shall take effect immediately upon its passage, approval, and publication as required by law.
Okay, thank you. I'll be, I'll ask you, you can kind of explain the background of why there's been these changes in the cable net department.
Thank you, Mayor. So upon Nahom's retirement, Jeff came in, as you, as you know, and took over the cable net department, and he has made some changes and done some restructuring of that department. Nahom's title was chief information officer. We changed that to broadband engineer. Jeff is a broad, is an engineer, and we're changing some of his duties to go in line with his skill set. He also added a network administrator. That person is going to be solely responsible, that person and another person will be responsible for handling the city of Barstown's computers, its software, their printers, and all the other hardware that goes with just the city of Barstown. So it doesn't have anything to do with the ISP side. It has everything to do with, you know, handling just the city's hardware and software. And then the broadband network administrator, he's a, he's designing our cable net system. He's designing the cable, Jessica Robinson's who it is. He's been doing that job for. been doing that job for a while without the title and without the grade. He's been in there designing and helping them. And I don't act like I know exactly what he's doing, but he's designing that system. So they added that position as well. The maintenance worker position, so Philip has, right now has a helper, is Josh Manningly. This is going to be an additional helper for Philip, who is going to be, I've been wanting to do this for a while, but he's going to be solely dedicated to downtown. This person is going to be doing the sidewalks, doing the weeds, help planting the planters, cleaning up garbage, cleaning up the alleys, the parking lots, everything. This person will be solely dedicated to downtown, helping during Christmas to put up the lights and the decorations and all that. So this maintenance worker will be solely dedicated to downtown Barstown.
Couple of things. We also had Brandon Ruh, who was also with our Cable Net Department. You know, he took a job actually with one of our vendors we have used. He's been gone before, air retirements. And we actually lost those two longtime people in that department. So that's why this is, these changes have been made with Jeff coming back and making some changes because the talent pool is not exactly the same with the skill set of these guys compared to what Brandon brought to the table and what Nahom brought to the table. So that's why there's been some changes. And then with the, with the maintenance person downtown, Philip, who heads that up, he does many more jobs on the day. We might elaborate on that a little bit.
Yeah, Philip, Philip is our facilities and grounds manager. So he goes to all the buildings and he is, his, his knowledge of all of our buildings and grounds and systems that operate, all that is, he surpasses everybody in the city of Barstown. And that's what he's usually doing. He's usually at a facility, either fixing their electric or fixing their HVAC, or fixing their lights, or doing something, maintaining those painting. He does, he does it all. Josh, his skill set is right in line with Philip's and he's very, and they're both very, very good at it. You know, and Barstown's getting to the point where we need somebody downtown because it, it's just, it, it has grown past those two, along with all their other duties that they have. You know, they can't keep up with downtown as well as do all the other duties. You know, they, they do all the signs, they do the embalaging and the flowers and all the welcome to Barstown signs. They do all landscaping around town that, that aren't anywhere near downtown, plus all the facilities. So it's time that we, we get somebody downtown to help with the planters and all the stuff that's going on downtown because this year.
That's bad. Two hours of day just picking up most city parking lots, trash, just accumulates on that. So, and we gotta have Philip. His skill set, he can fix some lights and repair the toilets and all this stuff. And all our city, he'll get sued besides spending his time downtown with the flowers. So this position is, and the traffic that we get now, there's so much, you know, pedestrian traffic and people in our town, it just creates a lot of, a lot of things to do to keep it looking bright. And so we get this extra help to keep up with that. So that's the reason behind these changes. Any other questions? Or ask for a motion of my legal made and Greg or myself? All right. If, then if I could, I'm going to ask for a motion then to approve the, the 2023-17, which is changes to our classification and compensation plan as presented.
It's going to go second.
I'm sorry.
This is the person.
This is the person, I'm sorry. This person, we don't have to take any actions. We'll move on then. Thank you, Greg.
Yes, sir.
My reports from the staff, we'll call on Aaron, the city administrator. We've got a letter or email from our PBA person, Mr. Williams. There's been some issue with some of the tax bills. Got sent out to the wrong people and so forth. So.
Yeah. So just as a refresher of how that property tax works, so PBA handles all the assessments. They, they create the entire tax roll, send it over to us, the county and the schools. And basically, we just get a listing of all properties within our district, addresses, map numbers, assessed values. And then we create our bills off of that tax roll that comes in from the PBA. Well, he notified all the taxing jurisdictions through email on, yesterday, that they have discovered an issue with the tax roll that he has sent out. All the sales of property from January through August, a majority of them came through in the tax roll with the seller's address on it. So he said there's about 1,200 properties that he knows of within the county. I don't know, he didn't tell, tell us how much was already paid and if they had paid. We'll have to go from that, I guess, and who's paid properly. And he's trying to whittle down the list and we'll send those out.
Peggy Smith with the Local Realtors Association, if she could send out an email, because the Realtors are probably going to start getting calls, send out an email explaining that so she can forward on to us, that we can at least explain it.
That's Mr. Williams' issue. He needs contact.
Well, that's true.
Hey, let's see what he has on that.
That's true.
He created that issue. We don't know how many of the 1,200 are city residents.
Right.
The weekend.
Yeah, that's true.
But evidently it was an error in his software setup, I think. I didn't quite get it. But he's been in contact with his vendor, trying to get that situation resolved.
A lot of happy buyers out there.
For now.
For now.
So I think the standard is we would give an extension, of course, probably two weeks at least is what he's noted, that we should probably be doing for any of these affected residents.
We thought we'd bring hand up. We just got it. We know we're by here, some people, you're under here, some people. So hopefully it won't be that big a deal. But there'll be a lot of people not wanting to pay on those that are trapped. They're not going to want to pay. So hopefully they get that straightened out. Chief Spaulding, do you want to talk about the dedication of the St. Agent Box?
Yeah, I think it's coming up in November, right? So yeah, hopefully all the testing's just about done on it. So everything should be ready to go. So also, this is Fire Prevention Week by United States Fire Administration. And this year, they're focusing on cooking safety. It's one of the leading causes, causes of fires in residential units and leading causes of fire deaths. So they're, they're focusing on that this year. Once schools get back in session, well, staff will be out there doing some public education with the school kids and everything like that. Just like to reinforce that everybody have working smoke detectors because they do save lives. Thank you.
Is there still a program where people can reach out to Barstown or Nelson County Fire Rescue for smoke detectors?
Yes, sir. Yes, we, they own their own home. We can, we'll go out and install them for them. This is a partnership with Red Cross where they provide the smoke detectors and we do the installation. But if they rent them, they should need, their landlords are responsible for providing those working smoke detectors. And if they're, they can't get them moving on their landlord, or station, contact us and we'll enforce the ordinance.
There's a program.
Yes, sir.
Okay. Too impressive. Anything happen?
Well, we have arts and crafts this weekend. So probably see many of you in the room there. And it looks like the weather's going to be really nice. So we're expecting really big crowds to that. So we're prepared for that this weekend.
I spoke with the county judge of Washington County today and meeting. He said their sorrel festival last weekend was the biggest they've had since the eighties. JD Shelburne helped. So the crowd was a lot younger because he showed up. So they had a big turnout. So that's good. But we're expecting big numbers here. I think we've got more vendors than we've ever had. So it's going to be a major event here. Okay, anything else?
Yes, sir.
Okay, thank you. Next one, we have a mobile food vendor, Little Blue Menues. So I associate Clark, Gary, if you can share with us.
Thank you, Mayor. Yes, this is a truck that's owned and operated by Chick-fil-A. And they have a business model where they're trying to really focus on just one or two items on the truck at a time. Right now, they just have wings and fries and drinks, I think. Something they've tried in Louisville a little bit already. They've tried it in the Northeast. It's, all the people we're dealing with, with our paperwork is the same people we deal with with Chick-fil-A. So we have everything in order. The only thing they don't have is the fire marshal sign off, which we talked to Chief Spaulding. He'll make sure the first time they set up that he's going to check out their truck. So other than that, they've turned down all their paperwork.
Okay. Would we want then a motion to approve the application for Little Blue Menues for a handle of a mobile food vendor department, subject to the inspection by our, our marshal?
I'll make it.
Your motion for council to check, it is in a second.
Second.
Inspector for council, no. Any other discussion? Okay, I'll favor six. If I have to say an aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion's carried. Thank you. All right. Any members of the council have anything to bring before the council this evening? Anything that I've got ready? From my report, I guess, as most of you all know, we had a very unusual situation involving a number of parishioners, most of the parishioners from St. Joseph's Church that, as of Sunday morning, they were, had been confined to their hotel for two days in Jerusalem as a result of the fighting that had started. And I was at church Sunday morning, Father Jacob Davidson up there. He heard from Father Terry that they were saved and in their hotel. That's really all he shared with us. But not long after that, some of the people on the tour started reaching out to Senator Higdon and myself and Judge Hudson's and others. And so that morning, I guess that started about 10 o'clock. And Senator Higdon, we kind of handed it off to him to get in touch with Senator McConnell, Paul's office, and Representative Massie, Representative Guthrie's office, because they've got people in place that handle constituent services, is what it's called. And so they immediately got the ball rolled with the State Department. And U.S. Embassy over in Jerusalem and so forth. And it was amazing how fast that they were able to respond to this because those 29 people needed emergency visas to be able to get out of Jerusalem and into Jordan safely. And within a 24-hour period, that was done. They were put on buses and were in Jordan, I guess, we were sort of several hours ahead of us. But I received word yesterday morning at about 6:30, which was the first time I looked at my phone, that they were safely in Jordan. And then just got word from, and then earlier today, Father Terry sent me an update at about 11:30 that they would be departing in a matter of hours. And most of them would get home tomorrow night. I just received a text from one of the travelers at four on them. I guess they've been on how the, how the plane, they got home tonight. They're going to get home tonight, four of them. The rest of them are going to come through Dallas and Philadelphia tomorrow. So it's, you know, quite a journey, but really great work on the part of really the people up in Washington, DC, you know, really did their work. I mean, to get home with field representatives from those congressmen in our senators' offices at 10 o'clock, 10:30 on Sunday morning, and get that moving. And then the embassy, probably, you know, there probably weren't many people around by the time some of this got to them, because I don't know, they're six, eight hours ahead of us. So that really turned out pretty good. They were, you know, as the day went on, Sunday, they were pretty concerned about still being holed up in that hotel in Jerusalem. They wanted to get out there. And so great work was done. So we're just happy. Unfortunately, Father Terry's mother passed away this morning. He will get back tomorrow night. So a big family from Lebanon. But, and he knew she was in pretty bad health with that. This trip had been planned for some time. But anyway, the good news is, tomorrow night, I think most all of the ones, there was one couple who, their son lives in Germany. So they had already planned to go to Germany after the end of this trip. So they're going to do that. They're going to complete their visit with their son. So I'm sure we're, I'm sure there'll be some interesting stories from this trip to the Holy Land by this group. They were scheduled to come home tomorrow or be home tomorrow night anyway. So the trip got cut short under some pretty bad old crazy circumstances. So we just have to hope and pray that they all get home safe and that all those other people over there in the middle of that fighting can be safe and some resolution can come to that. Because it's really, really terrible what's going on over there. So keep all those people. And there are, there is a group from Glasgow. I was in a meeting in E-Town today. And there's another group from Glasgow, a pretty good sized group, that are working to get home. And also some U.S. senators were over there as well. I do know that. And then just every day, visitors that are up, there's probably hundreds, if not maybe a thousand of those type of people that go as Mondays and Tuesdays to visit Israel and Jerusalem. So anyway, good work to get that done. I was happy to be able to give that update since Sunday. It's really went in the right direction since then. So that's really all I've got. Oh, one other thing, excuse me. The Main Street Halloween event, that will be October 27th, four to six. That's a kind of a Main Street and Bethel Opportunity Center event that starts at four to six o'clock at the farmer's market. And then all the downtown merchants participate in that as well. So that'll be as usual on Friday, October 27th. So we got a lot to be, a big turnout for that as usual. All right, that's all I have. So if there's nothing else, ask for motion for a jury. So that motion by Councilwoman Hart, is there a second?
Second.
If the council knows, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion's carried. Thank you.
I really wanted to see parading through here. I really wanted that. But probably somebody saved it. It didn't.
Anything else you want to say?
See, I went to, right after Sherwood, the Christmas commission, Betty and I went and talked to Brooke and Rosemary. And I asked him, I said, you tell me where she's at. I'll go get her. And he mentioned her name. But anyway, he said Eli was two. He said, y'all want to see Eli? I said, yeah. So Rosemary had him at a house. So she brought him down. And he acted like he was scared to death. But finally, he hugged Betty. Yeah. He was, you know, right after. But I said, you tell me where she's at. I'll go get her. And he never would answer. He just stayed in a daze, you know. And I knew he was guilty as hell. Oh, well, anyway. But then he calls John Snow, Detective, and told him that we were harassing him. So he calls us up first. Y'all need to stay away from him, you know. I'm just waiting for more arrests.
One other point I'd like to say, I told him, when he had this guy called, when they was drilling, Snow was drilling out in there. He said, can I take his call? Well, yeah, you can take it. He put it on speaker so Snow could hear every word that was said. And he said, well, now what's that girl's name? She took him home. She wrote his check. He, she, he should have known. That's all a made up thing right there.
So, one last thing, I know some other people have just joined, what did you think about when you got the call from your son last week?
Roger, I thought it was about time. We've been waiting over eight years, it's about time they put the handcuffs on him. And someone brought, had it on his family, had their phone handcuffed him, and so that was a good feeling, a good feeling.
What would you like to say to Brooks House? In jail, they can watch TV.
He deserves where he's at, he needs to be there for the rest of his life, is what I'm hoping for Brooks House. I don't think he'll ever have to see daylight again. Too many years behind of what they did in Crystal. But we know, we don't know what they done to him, we know they murdered him, but we don't know.
And Tommy also.
And Tommy, my son, we think they involved in Tommy's. Hundred percent.